We'll go ahead and call today's meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. Barbecue Unified School District Governing Board Public Hearing. I'll turn it over to Mr. Sabala for roll call.
Allo, President, Juan Mondeir.
Be on height two.
Catherine Vance, Sylvia Hendricks, Elmae Grieswood, Annemarie Stevens.
In height two.
We do have a quorum. We'll continue with this evening's agenda. Our routine business, the approval of the April 15th, 20, sorry, November 12th, 2024, public hearing agenda. If there are no amendments or motions to approve, is there a second? Second by Ms. Elmae Grieswood.
Allo, is the favor of this motion Juan Mondeir?
Mosapo.
Elmae Grieswood, Annemarie Stevens.
Mosapo.
Motion carries number four. Our information items this evening. Our public hearing on the performance play plan for eligible student teachers for intermediate campus. Mr. Diaz.
Sko Kurenek, Anyan Abdiyek, Ruben Diaz. Welcome, Mr. Kuk, Superintendent. Good evening. My name is Ruben Diaz. I am the proud superintendent for Barbecue Unified School District. And today we have a special treat. We have the intermediate to present the 301. Under the direction of the 301 lead, we have Mr. Cody and Dr. Cerro. But also, Mr. Cody is doing his admin, so he will also be supporting us today. And we're gonna make sure he also part of his training participating in one of the admin meetings. So welcome aboard, Mr. Cody, and welcome aboard. Dr. Cerro, so at this point, we're gonna open up the presentation. If you would like, now you may come to the podium to present. If you go, no, it's gonna be all the way down. Sorry, Aaron, go all the way down in the presentation, and you're gonna click on their next page, next page, next page, next page, right there on the presentation in immediate canvas slides, right there. And you're up. Welcome, gentlemen.
All right, good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's on.
Yeah, it is on. And for the members of the public that they don't know what do we want, if you don't mind giving a little two cents. Good evening, board members, Mr. Diaz, and parents and staff. So just, my name's Mr. Cody. I'm representing the 301 plan for the intermediate campus. So the 301 basically is an incentive program for our teachers to excel and challenge the students and to achieve higher proficiency in our assessments. So I'm just gonna go over this presentation. So it's academic performance for this school year. The rationale. So our goals that are embedded in this document, they are aligned with the district and the state academic goals. Our objective is to close the achievement gap with our school aligned with the district and the state, which are aligned with evidence-based strategies in the classrooms that our teachers are teaching every day. And here is the stretch goal, one, two, and the proficiency levels that the district has implemented, and our 301 plan does align with it. The measurable goals. So we have our school-wide classroom data instructional. So based off of this, the instructional, a big chunk of it is going to be instructional. It's broken down, school-wide, classroom, and instructional. So the first one is the school-wide data. So we, out of the total, there's 25% of the total evaluation in ELA and mathematics. Our goal is that 70% of the students will show growth from one or more proficiency levels as measured by the assessment in synergy. The other data that we're gonna use is attendance. So our goal, again, is to make 90 to 100 attendance school-wide. Now, we'll go to the classroom data. Our goal in the classroom data is that we would like to see all students will grow into target proficiency levels in the following power standards. So ELA math and sixth grade math, we do have three power standards, essential standards that we implement throughout the school year. So our goal is that the students will grow in the target proficiency levels with the power standard. Now we'll go to the classroom data. So the breakdown is that, the one, the slide we previously looked at, is that 70% of the students demonstrate growth on the previous target essential. And the breakdown is that we want 45% to move from non-proficient, 25% from minimal proficient, and then 10% from partial proficient. And the ESS students, we align their goal also, is that 70 to 100% of ESS students will demonstrate a 30% or more growth aligned with their IEP goals. So in conclusion, our overall objective is that we show growth in our data, and our target is at a range of 70%. Broken down from the school-wide data and the classroom data, and which will be implemented into the instructional. Thank you. Board, parents, staff, if you guys have any questions?
So for the sake of the public, during public hearings, you're more than welcome to ask any questions if you have any questions during this time. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the board members? Mr. Cody, thank you so much for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both for all your work.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Annemarie Stevens. Is there a second? I'll second the motion to adjourn.
Allo, President, adjourn.
Mosapo.
Elmae Grieswood, Annemarie Stevens.
Mosapo.
It's 5:12 PM. We are adjourned for our public hearing. Our regular meeting will start at 5:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
And parents, I know you're a little bit early, but we'll be starting shortly with the student of the month, we think you. Right now, we start with a public hearing. You're welcome to stay. We're more than welcome to use the restroom.
Okay, like, uh, skutkutnik wusichamui. We'll go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty four. Barbecue Unified School District Regular Governing Board Meeting. As I called the meeting to order, I want to, of course, reiterate and support our administration and the entire district by sharing with you our vision, mission, and purpose statements. Our vision statement is our students will be loved, encouraged, and prepared to take on the world by embracing our him duck. Our mission statement is we create healthy, inspiring, motivating, developing, achieving graduates. And our purpose statement is we create a nurturing learning environment for every child, every day, with an additional commitment to support our him duck. For those of you who may not know, him duck is the autumn word, meaning our way of life. And as a board and representatives of the community, we want to continue to uphold and, of course, impress on not only the community but the district at large that our culture and our heritage is as important as anything we do throughout the day. So in education and as much as we can, we encourage the use of the autumn yawk as well as any and all ways that we can lift up the culture and heritage for the district, for our students, and of course, in any way possible through our education system provided here. As a, as a public school on tribal lands, it is our purpose and our, and our mission to be able to do as such, and of course, representatives of the community. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sabala for roll call.
President, President Mundia.
Yeah, hi, sir.
Catherine Banks.
Sylvia Hendricks.
Elamy Grieswood.
Here.
Anna Marie Stevens.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. We'll continue with this evening's agenda. Uh, our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are able, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Letter D this evening is our routine business. Number one is the approval of the November, November twelfth, twenty twenty four board meeting agenda. Governing Board members, I do have a couple of changes I want to address as we approve the agenda. First off is the removal of action item six to be brought back until, uh, at our next, um, board meeting. So we're removing number six, which is the Barbecue Unified School District FY twenty twenty-three annual audit and placed on the December agenda. I'd like to also address, uh, action item number two to clarify, that is discussion and possible approval of, uh, reclassification and permanent appointment for the Barbecue Middle and High School Principal. In addition to a correction to the agenda, I'd also like to address the action item number nine. It should read discussion, discussion and possible approval of the recommendation from Barbecue Unified School District Legal Counsel to make an effort to recuperate funds of overpayment claims. Mr. Diaz, is there anything else or governing board members, anything else?
Not at this point, President Mundia.
Thank you, sir. If there are no objections, I would like to motion to approve with those corrections and amendments. Second by Ms. Elamy Grieswood.
All those in favor of the motion, Juan Mundia.
Most of all.
Aye.
Anna Marie Stevens.
Most of all.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Number two is our approval of the October fifteen, twenty twenty-four public hearing minutes. Governing Board, with your approval, we'd also, I'd also like to request to approve October fifteen, twenty twenty-four regular board meeting minutes as one action item. If there are no objections, I'll motion to approve.
Again.
Second by Ms. Anna Marie Stevens.
All those in favor of the motion, Juan Mundia.
Most of all.
Elamy Grieswood.
Aye.
Anna Marie Stevens.
Most of all.
Motion carries.
Number four is our call to the audience.
No call to the audience.
For the record, we have no call to the audience. We'll continue with our agenda this evening. Num, letter E is the information items. Number one is our Barbecue Student Council Report. Mr. Diaz.
President Mundia, uh, members of the community, it is with a great honor that I would like to introduce our officers for our student council for this year. I will ask the student council president to please join me, Mr. Eli and his members, and to introduce themselves. And at this point, um, it is one, also one of my favorite parts because I get to step down as a superintendent so I can let my young leaders to lead our district. So at this point, Mr. President, um, Eli, take it away.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Eli Johnson and I am the student, student council president.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, my name is Joshua Roque. I am the vice president of Stuko, class of twenty twenty-five.
Hello, I am Justin James Ethan Caniones. I am the historian of, and I am in class of twenty twenty-five.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sahana Nalam. I'm the secretary of the Executive Board in Stuko, and I am part of class two thousand twenty-five.
Skutk Tash, everybody. My name is Jessica Ortega, and I am the treasurer for the executive board for, um, executive student council. Thank you.
Skutk Tash, everybody. My name is Jasmine Hendricks, and I am class of twenty twenty-six.
Just a quick update, we do not have a class period for student council, so when we do our meetings, we will do, be doing them during lunch. Um, next slide. So the time, um, what the meeting is being during lunch, it gives us a little bit of time to plan things, but also we will only be able to most likely, well, make the meetings for January, March, and May. Um, this presentation is just a big rundown of what we did this past quarter. We had a pep assembly, we had homecoming, we had a couple of spirit weeks, um, overview of the volleyball and football and some of the senior nights that happened.
Greetings, everyone. Um, today I will, uh, talk about, um, what happened during this event here. Uh, during the first quarter, we did a fall pep assembly, uh, during the fall season. And during this time, we, uh, introduced the, the students who participated in the sports events, uh, of football, volleyball, and, uh, the cross-country team. And during this time as well, the, uh, the cheer. And we also introduced the class, um, officers during this time. And after a while, we introduced the homecoming royalties. Next page. And so after that, the homecoming game, uh, the event was, we did a, a very wonderful work, a creative mind with all class right here. We did a float for, um, each of the classes, and everyone, um, had a wonderful time, and, um, they showed great creativity. And the, um, the, the, the king and queen for these, uh, the homecoming is Mila and Tash. And, um, the movie or the theme of this float is, uh, the universals, I think. Thanks. Oh, okay. Um, during this time, also had spirit weeks and, um, the events that happened this time, uh, the ones that we took a photo with were the twin day, the class color day, and anything but a backpack day. And, um, I'm glad to see that everyone, uh, got to participate in it. Thanks.
Cool. Um, so first, we're recognizing our volleyball season. The coach was Juana Antonio. Just how much commitment everyone had and just it made everybody feel welcome. And yeah, just that's all.
Next, uh, is our football season, who the coach was Richard Garcia, AKA Cody. They were ranked number six in the region also, and their stat was one to eight in their conference, but they did a good job and they tried very hardest. Eli, do you want to say something about that? Okay, next one, please. Okay. Next up is our cross-country season, who our coach was Joseph Mies. At regionals, the boys placed eleven, oh, wait, sorry, oops. At regionals, the boys placed first in the region, which is very exciting. It hasn't happened in, I don't know how many years. And Mila Johnson and I qualified for state. As state, the boys placed eleventh at state, and Mila placed seventh, while I placed eighty-sixth. And this, this season has been a very successful season, I would say. We all worked our very hardest and our commitment was very high. Dedication is very high, I'd say. Um, I'm proud of all of us and how hard we worked, and yeah, thank you. Cool. Okay, um, for our senior nights, the class of twenty twenty-five. Oh, can you go back, please? Thank you. Okay, on senior night, we recognized our football seniors on September, give me a second, September twenty-seventh. There was, we recognized our football seniors and our cross-country seniors. And on October, I'm sorry, October twenty-second, we recognized our volleyball seniors. And it was pretty really good nights. I'm not sure what to say about it. It was beautiful. Thank you.
So this is, this is all the possible upcoming events. And to, and this first, the first one is Bubble Day, and for Bubble Day, we are planning on selling. And for Spirit Week, we are planning on various, um, events that we will, um, start. And for, the third one is the four V four basketball tournament event in the school. And for the fourth is the Winter Haven Field Trip. It is a field trip for student council. And for the fifth one is the basketball seasons. We are excited for this basketball seasons. And for the food trading event is, uh, we are also planning on this, and it is still a work in progress. Thank you.
I think that's pretty much all, everyone. Do you got questions or comments? None? Okay, then, oh, you go.
Mr. Diaz.
I want to highlight once again how, how proud I am that you are accepting additional responsibilities to be able to make your school a much better experience, not only for you but everybody else. It takes courage, it takes leadership. Your advocacy and your voice matters, so I thank you for being here today representing the entire student council. I wish you a very successful year, and we look forward having you here, and also to invite us in your meeting so we can continue to collaborate. Let's give him a big round of applause.
Ms. Ella.
Um, I'd like to, um, uh, make comment, comment on, uh, the, the games. I've done to, uh, a couple of football games and, uh, and volleyball game. And but I, I would like to ask, um, you know, we have that marquee there at the high school, but, um, I wonder why none of the announcements are posted on there? All I see is, um, the date and the temperature, you know, so the community can know what's going on, you know? And I, and I don't see at the post office either, so what, uh, activities are going on at the high school? It would be nice to, to, um, communicate with the community. And so, and I, I hope you have a good season, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ella.
Thank you.
Anything, Ms. Hannah?
Just thank you, everybody, for all your hard work. I know it takes commitment, um, to plan events and get things going, and also to the cross-country team. Congratulations, and thank you.
Yes, thank you guys so much for being here. I know it takes a little bit of an effort to stand up and, and speak, but you guys are doing amazing. And again, as Mr., as the superintendent just said, if there are any questions you guys want to pose to not only the board but to him, please do so. It was a very good communication process we had with the last student council, and I want to continue to see that happen because, of course, we want to be accountable to you as much as we're accountable to everyone else. So thank you so much for being here this evening. We can't wait to see you in January. Is that the next date? Awesome. Mr. Diaz.
And one more thing, I also want to, uh, give a shout out to Ms. Kinsey, Janet Kinsey. She is our district math coach, and she has embraced this challenge, um, also with additional duties and, and being the leader and the representative for student council. Uh, let's give our student council this year all of our love with a big hand, and also to Ms. Kinsey for representing us. Thank you all. Have a great year.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
We'll see you. Item number two this evening is our Barbecue Unified School District Students of the Month. Senor Diaz.
Senor Mundia, at this point, uh, please help me welcome Ms. Jennifer Enriquez to help us and support us with the first, uh, round of students. If it's your first time, students, raise your hand if you are here for the student of the month. Stand up, nice and tall. Students of the month, please stand up. Let's give him a big round of applause. Quinn, thank you. Here are instructions, when you hear your name, you're going to have to come and you have to shake the hands of Ms. Stevens, Ms. Grieswood, President Mundia, get myself, get your goodies, and then we're going to stand up here in the front, and you're going to have to ask your parents or families and relatives, all one hundred of them, to come forward for one picture. Okay? So having said that, um, I'm going to ask the pictures. Oh, you got your phone? All right, well, let's do that. Um, Mr. Enriquez, please take it away.
All right. Good evening, Board President Mundia, Governing Board Members, Superintendent Diaz, and Community Members. Um, our first student of the month is from our four-year-old pre-K class, and that's Romari Francisco. I don't see him, but he is from the house of Amistad. He was chosen because he has made great progress with his behavior. He shows up every day to class with a great attitude and ready to learn. He cares about his classmates and always makes sure they are doing okay. Romari is the only student in class that has had one hundred percent attendance since school started. There he is. Can I just add special shout out to the parents? Attendance is super important for our students to learn at such a young age. Thank you.
All right.
Our next student of the month was nominated from Mrs. Halt's kindergarten class, Angel Bayesva. He's here, he's a little shy. Angel Bayesva has been an outstanding role model in our classroom. He follows the rules of the classroom and always encourages his classmates to follow the rules. He works diligently to complete his work without errors and on time. Thank you, Angel, for being a great student, from Mrs. Halt. When he was asked what he wants to be when he grows up, he would like to be a police officer so he can put robbers in jail. Can we have grandpa come up? I see other family members out there. Come join the picture.
I want to have my suit on.
And now Ms. Spotted Wolf will come up and announce her student of the month.
Skutkutnik wusichamui. Ani apjigik, Amy Spotted Wolf. Ani apamjod, Jashak, Wawegirik, Jigashan, Tanatumjoid. Hello, everyone. I'm Ms. Spotted Wolf, and I'm here to recognize my student in the first grade. Um, so I would like to honor Mr. Connor Jose. He is our student of the month. He's in the house Revere, um, he's in Ms. Spotted Wolf's class. And this year, this year is Connor's first year in school. Um, he's, he didn't go to kindergarten, and he has been excelling so well in my class. Um, he just showed tremendous cla, tremendous growth from the start. And, um, Connor's excelling in math and in reading and in writing. And on top of that, he's always kind, respectful, and responsible student here at Aneon Oasis Primary School. So thank you, Connor, so much for being such a great student. When Connor grows up, he wants to be a police officer so he can arrest bad guys.
From second grade, Ms. Adson's class, Xavier Condi. Xavier is from the house of Alterismo. He is a great student. He always comes to school ready to learn. He is very responsible and respectful. He is a great role model in the classroom and is always willing to lend a hand. When he was asked what he wants to be when he grows up, he would also like to be a police officer. From Ms. Gowen's third grade classroom, we have Evening Star Juan. Don't see her. Um, Evening Star is an amazing student. She has 100% of her work turned in and does extra read and response for SFA. She has been to school on time and present every day. She is kind to her classmates and peers, and peer tutors when needed. When she was asked what she'd like to be when she grows up, she said she would like to be a teacher. And from Ms. Jose's Himdog class is Elijah Harvey. Elijah is from the House of Amistad. He is kind, helpful, and participates, follows directions, and is willing to learn about the Autumn Himdog. When he was asked what he'd like to be when he grows up, he would like to be a firefighter. Congratulations. Please welcome Mr. Cody from the Intermediate Campus.
All right, uh, good evening, Skutkash. Um, good evening, Mr. President Buendia, Board members, Pres- uh, Superintendent Mr. Diaz, and parents. We are very excited to announce the Intermediate Campus Student of the Month. First, from fourth grade, fourth grade, we have Mr. Fuentes. Mr. Fuentes here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mr. Fuentes, and I'm very excited and honored to present and introduce to you the Student of the Month for fourth grade from my class and from, um, he's from Isabindi. None other than Dimitri Sunny. Dimitri exemplifies invaluable qualities and contributions to our classroom community. He consistently exemplifies a positive attitude, kindness, and un-wavering work ethic. Moreover, Dimitri takes pride in his work, completing assignments punctually, and always striving for excellence. In every way, he embodies the spirit of our classroom and serves as an inspiring role model for his peers. When asked, how can he make the world a better place? He said, "I can make the world a better place by picking up trash, cleaning up after myself, and helping others, especially the elderly." Good job, and congratulations.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Uh, from fifth grade is from my class. Um, I nominated, nominated Mr. Aiden Velasco. He's from the House of Isabindi. But, um, Aiden was not able to join us tonight, so I'll just read a little script, um, from Aiden. Um, Aiden is an amazing student who displays positive behavior skills, excels academically, and works well with others. Aiden displayed growth in his district formative assessments and has always come to class with notes and supplies ready for instruction. When asked, um, Aiden, how he would make the world a better place, he centered his focus around ending starvation and making sure everyone is able to have a healthy and plentiful meal. So, and we'll make sure Aiden gets his, uh, bag and award. Um, from sixth grade, we have Ms. Woosley. I didn't see her. Um, I'll do her report. From sixth grade, uh, Ms. Woosley nominated Dreson Matthews. All right. Uh, Dreson is from the House Amistad. Uh, Ms. Woosley shared with us that, um, Dreson has amazing characteristic traits of responsibility and shows, uh, respectfulness. Uh, Dreson is very mature and uses kind matters on a daily basis towards adults and his peers. He is always on task and completes his assignments on time and shows his best work. He is very helpful in the classroom with the morning announcements as well as, uh, lunch supervision during fifth, fourth and fifth grade recess. He has become a true leader on our campus, and we are very proud to nominate him for Student of the Month. And when asked how he would, uh, better the world, he stated that he would like to become president and make better laws, helping people with addiction and making stronger drug laws. So, thank you. All right. From our specials, we have STEM, Ms. Danny.
All right. Good evening, Skutkash, Anyan Abtugge, Kimberly Danny. So I nominated Patricio Hendricks from my SFA class, and he's in Mr. Fuentes's class also. So I don't see him here, but Patricio is in my Success for All class, my Thursday STEM class. I chose Patricio because he's always on task and engaged in my classes. He's a great leader in his SFA group and helps to keep them on task. But most importantly, Patricio is kind and generous. When a classmate is in need of something in class, he'll share his things without, with them without hesitation. And the way he would make the world a better place is to become president and tell them what is good and wrong, and they will vote for me and follow the rules.
All right. Thank you. And now we have secondary. We have the amazing Ms. Ansay. Thank you.
Hello, Board members, President Buendia, Superintendent Diaz, and all our happy families. Um, for the seventh grade team named Xavier Romero as the October Student of the Month. Xavier is the son of Amber Ramon. Xavier's home village is Bigfields. Xavier is a proud member of Rever. He is an athlete and played for the Babokiri Cougars in football, and he's looking forward to basketball season. Xavier's favorite art class is art because it is really fun, and I learned a lot being with my friends. Xavier's favorite teacher is Mr. Jones because he is fun to work with. After graduating from Babokiri High School, Xavier plans to go to college at the University of Arizona so that he can work towards his career in sports photography. Xavier would like to thank his mom for respecting his opinions on how he likes to learn, as well as his dad, Ms. Roach, Mr. Jones, and Ms. Sose for helping him learn. Congratulations, Xavier. We are proud of you. The eighth grader is here, so be ready. The eighth grade team names Angaloa Totola as the October Student of the Month. Angaloa is the son of Frank and Davina Totola. Angaloa's home village is Covered Wells. Angaloa is a proud member of the Babokiri Football Team. His favorite class is history because he likes learning about the history of things. His favorite teacher is Mr. Cutler because he's a cool guy. After graduating from Babokiri High School, Angaloa plans to play college football and would love to play for LSU if given the chance. Angaloa wants to thank his parents for putting a lot of pressure on him. Congratulations, Lofa. We are proud of you. Cole Wilson is the freshman class student of the month for October. Cole is the son of Edlin Bayesva and Marcus Wilson. Cole's home village is Sells. Cole is a proud member of Amistad. Cole is a baseball player. His favorite class is Avid because it helps him learn how to plan for his future and get into the right college. His favorite teacher is Ms. Kaburatan because she always has a smile on her face. After graduating from Babokiri High School, Cole plans to go to college. He's unsure which college, but knows that Avid will help him decide when graduation grows near. Cole would like to thank mom for always pushing him to be his greatest. Congratulations, Cole. We are proud of you. Princess Nathalie Quinones is the sophomore class student of the month for October. Princess is the daughter of Ms. Honey May and Marvin Quinones. Princess's home is Cebu, Philippines, but she currently resides in Sells, Arizona. Princess is a proud member of Rever. Her favorite class is art because she loves being creative and following directions. Her favorite teacher is everyone because she honors all her teachers equally. After graduating from Babokiri High School, Princess plans to go to college, followed by going on a mission. Princess would like to express her gratitude for her mother's efforts and opportunity by bringing her to the United States. Congratulations, Princess. We are proud of you. Vito Hendricks is the junior class student of the month for October. Vito is the son of Jay and Derwin Condi. Vito's, um, Vito is a proud member of Rever, the House of Dreamers. He is an athlete playing varsity football for the Babokiri Warriors. Vito's favorite class is Donna Autumn Art with Mr. Mikey Enius because Vito is an artist and loves the art of his people. Vito doesn't have a favorite teacher because he accepts and admires all his teachers equally. After graduating from Babokiri Secondary Campus, Vito plans on seeing what is out there and creating a new pathway for himself and for his family. Vito would like to honor and acknowledge Jay and Derwin Condi. He would like to thank them for staying strong and always providing a good example of how to live. Vito would like to say the overcoming of struggle. The struggle is real, but also beautiful. Always hold yourself up high. Congratulations, Vito. We are proud of you. Darian Begay is the senior class student of the month for October. Darian, go ahead, Darian, start coming up. Darian is the grandson of Georgiana Jose. Darian's home village is Akchen. Darian is a proud member of Isabindi. His favorite class is World History with Ms. Kaburatan because Ms. Kaburatan is friendly and a funny person. His favorite teacher is Mr. Acuna because he makes science interesting. After graduating from Babokiri High School, Darian plans on going to TOCC. His current career goal is to become a chef. Darian would like to thank his grandma for taking care of his family for all these years and for sending us to school. We're so proud of you, Darian. Congratulations. Thank you. And up next, Mr. Barrett Fox.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Board President Buendia, Board members, Superintendent. Thank you guys for staying, the ones that are. We appreciate that greatly. Okay, uh, so Indian Oasis Middle and High School Student of the Month, Mr. Mark Blaine. Come on up, Mr. Mark Blaine. He's here. I saw him. There he is. We, we call him Big Mark. We've got a few Marks. That's Big Mark. Go figure. So let me tell you, I, I really wanted to write a beautiful, articulate, perfect speech for Mr. Mark Blaine that exemplified an amazing student, a mature young- I remember when I met Mark, my very first week at work. Uh, he walks into my office and he says, "Hey, what are you doing?" And I said, "Ah, just trying to get my office set up." And he jumped up on a chair, took the stapler from me, and started putting up all the banners and the pictures and, and everything else. And he's been nothing but a wonderful experience ever since. He's a two, three-time Student of the Month. And keep an eye out for Mr. Blaine. He's going places. Mark, I'm so proud of you. You don't even understand. Thank you, everybody.
Uh, just for the record, that'll conclude our Student of the Month portion of the agenda. Um, Board members, we are going to stay up here because we are going to move on to item number three. Before I do that, I want to say thank you and so, and so much, um, on behalf of the board for how much that part of the agenda really hits home because it is important for us to take, to take a moment and acknowledge those students that are not only excelling, but also when we come to these students and parents and all of the recognition that the guardians, you know, want to be able to see and lift up their child, we're happy to do so as a board. So that is always the best part of our agenda, and I, and I truly, truly cannot, um, thank any, thank all of you enough, um, from Superintendent, principals, teachers, everyone else in between that makes the effort to see the successes that we're proud to be able to stand up here and, and support as a board. So thank you so much for that. With that, I'll move on to number three, which is our Himdog Board, and is in recognition of the Barbecue Unified School District High School. Go up, please. Cross-country team. Sorry. Thank you.
President Buendia, members of the community, students, and it is nothing but a true honor to stand right here, uh, right now and present this Himdog Award to our athletes. Um, these are students who have gone above and beyond, not only in academics, but also they go in the extra mile by, um, spending their time practicing. Um, I'm going to read a letter that I want to honor my students, but I also want to need the support of Ms. Ansay. Once I finish reading the letter, she, she can call the names of the students so I can present them with their necklace. But the letter says the following. If you don't mind airing, opening the letter. Here we go. The letter reads a little bit, there you go. The mission for Barbecue Unified School District is to create healthy, inspiring, motivating, achieving graduates. Additionally, two of our goals in our three-year stretch goal strategic plan are essential night, which is to connect and, and connect and challenge, as well as goal number four, support and challenge. With that in mind, it is a true privilege to honor the, um, our 2024, 2025 BUSD cross-country team, their, um, and their family members and BUSD coaches for showing the results of creating a healthy, inspiring, and motivating role models for our school and community. On behalf of the Babokiri Unified School District Governing Board, BUSD staff, and the Superintendent, it is with great pride to recognize the members of the team with a Himdog Award for setting the new standard by winning the first place in regional while valuing education and extracurricular activities. The 2024, 2025 cross-country team demonstrated the power of commitment, leadership, resulting in what our BUSD mission stands for. Thank you for being brave. Thank you for being bold. Thank you for being BUSD. The following students, please come forward, and also the coaches. Um, but also I want to express, extend my appreciation to all of the families for being flexible, for inspiring your children, and supporting your children in these extracurricular activities.
Okay, Ms. Jasmine Hendricks. Soraya Anton. Kyla Dolores. Quetta Toro. Malia Johnson. Henry Condi. Nicholas Nacho. Danisha Miguel. Noah Segundo. Noah Segundo. Ezekiel Hendricks. Mariano Francisco. Cade Wildner. Uriah Lewis. Kyler Baptisto. Juan Martin. Angel Martinez. Draven Leonard. Jensen Pablo. Gino Hendricks. And the coaches are Mr. Joseph Mies and Ms. Suzie Garcia. And Ms. Jessica Ortega.
Sorry, who placed 87th at state or 86th? You missed the name on your report.
I did. Okay, I need to add it.
Did he miss anyone else? Did he miss anyone else?
There you go.
Did he miss anyone else?
Everybody else that is not here, so make sure you give him one, alright? Thank you. Because they earned it. You're welcome to stay.
Okay, continuing this evening's agenda, we'll move on to number four, which is our Babakiri Unified School District Governing Board Financial Report from Ms. Clementina Carla. Ms. Carla.
That's my fault. I distracted her. I apologize.
Sorry. Good evening, President Buendia, Governing Board members, Superintendent Diaz, and everybody that's in here. I hope you had an opportunity to look over the student auxiliary and student activities balances. The student activities and auxiliary balances through October 31st were attached for you to review. The student activities accounts had deposited deposits totaling $4,158.73 in the month of October. There were VHS volleyball and football concession sales, VHS and BMS club sales at the Carnival of Champions event, and stale dating warrants from fiscal year '23. There was one purchase from VHS volleyball for meals totaling $28.01, and the ending balance for the student activity account on October 31st was Can you make it smaller, Erin? Please. And then for the student auxiliary fund, there were deposits totaling $3,711.73 from VHS volleyball and football admissions and Indian Oasis Elementary School for the Foschelestic Book Fair sales. There was one disbursement of $525 from VHS entry fees to cross-country. The ending balance for the student auxiliary account on October 31st was $5,348.31. Are there any questions?
Questions from the board on the student and club- student club activities?
Thank you.
Ms. Carla, go ahead.
And then we had our first financials for October for fiscal year '25. We're still working on reconciling with Pima County. There's still a little bit of variances from prior years, but we're also using our auditing consultant to help clear a lot of that up. But you can see a lot of the highlights are grant-related, and we're still waiting for the information to come down from ADE. So I hope you had an opportunity to see that. There are negative budget balances, but only because the budget balances, the budget hasn't been input or, like, again, we haven't finalized the numbers from ADE. They're all currently in revision due to the carry-forward information being verified by ADE. Overall, 55.77% of the budget for all funds were expended and encumbered, leaving a budget balance of 44.23%. The average percentage of expenditures for October is 33.33%, and BUSD has spent 16.89% of that. That does not include the encumbrances. Are there any questions?
Questions for the budget? No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carla.
She got the money. Give her a hand, guys.
I will be very nice to the money lady. Number five is our Babakiri Unified School District Principal Reports. Mr. Diaz?
President Buendia, members of the board at this point, please help me welcome back Ms. Enriquez. Ms. Enriquez, you're up.
Good evening, President Buendia, Governing Board members, Superintendent Diaz. I have submitted my board report in writing. I hope you've had the opportunity to read it. We are still holding strong with our attendance at 90%. We do have a new November attendance challenge. I did leak it on there, so when you have an opportunity, or if you already have, you will be aware that we are putting our students into a drawing. This means they cannot be late. They have to be there all of November, and they'll be put into a drawing for a turkey for Thanksgiving. So thank you to Ms. Cornell, Ms. Sudam, Mr. Diaz, and myself. We are all donating turkeys so that we can give these to our students and families. I'm sorry? You didn't know Ben, but she is.
And you're cooking them too, Ben.
And also to the Sunrise House, who is also providing the fixings to go along with the turkey. So thank you, Ms. Hart. Go ahead.
President Buendia? Also, I want to congratulate the parents, the staff, and the admin at the primary. When we compare last year attendance report to this year's report, every single grade level, it's a lot higher than last year. And again, they're not only keeping 90%, but it is keeping percent by grade level and by school across all the months. It is my understanding.
Our staff?
No, comparing the report from this year to last year. Can you bring up the attendance, Erin, please? There you go. The attendance is greater this year than last year in all grade levels, and I want to extend not only my appreciation to you, your teachers, and your staff, but also the families because they have a much higher attendance this year than last year. And also, I want to extend my shout-out to kinder staff in second grade because they have maintained it for the entire year. So congratulations.
Thank you. I think that was all the highlights. Erin, if you want to play the video?
My favorite food is pizza because it is cheesy and it smells good.
Good morning, Roadrunners. Happy Halloween. Staff, I hope everyone checked their boxes this morning. There were small aliens placed in each of your boxes. Some of them have numbers on the back. Throughout the day, we'll call a number. If that number is yours, you have two minutes to get to the front office for your prize. You cannot send a student. And we have our first number, 12. You have two minutes to get to the front office. Draw at the top what is called a banner. A banner is a quick way for us to see where you're at. So on the top of your banner, you're going to write the problem number that you're on.
So, just a couple things, okay? When you guys go trick-or-treating tomorrow, do you guys want to go to a house that's really dark? Or do you guys want to go to a house that has lights on? Good job. Wait, another question. Do you guys want to eat candy that's closed, that nobody's messed with? Or do you guys want to eat candy that's already been opened? Oh, yes, closed. You don't want to eat open candy. If you see open candy, what should you do with it? Good job. Or tell your mom and dad, right? Okay. One more thing. Do you guys want to wear black clothes at nighttime? Or do you want to wear, like, yellow, red, blue, so people can see you? You guys want to wear bright colors, Ramona? You guys don't want to wear all black, okay? Alright, so who's excited to go trick-or-treating? Who wants a piece of candy from me today?
Why are monkeys good employees? Anybody? Nobody? They get wrapped up in their work. That was a good one. I like that one. Okay, last one. How does a scarecrow drink his juice? Anybody? Nope? Anybody? Nope? With a straw, duh.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Enriquez from the board? Ms. Anna?
I was just gonna say, good job. I always enjoy watching the videos. But good job on attendance. I think it's really important. You could definitely see the progress you guys have been making over the years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything, Ms. Ellen?
Thank you for your report. Congratulations again on that student attendance. And everything's going really well, and I thank all the teachers and the staff. Happy now. Thank you.
Yes, congratulations and, um, I lost my thought. Kudos on the challenge. I think it's awesome. It's great. So otherwise, thank you so much for the presentation and the report.
President Buendia, members of the board, help me welcome Mr. Cody and ask as many questions as you want as part of this presentation.
You better be ready.
Alright, good evening again. President Buendia, board members, Superintendent Mr. Diaz. Do I get one of those?
Wrong one.
That's accelerated. We need a tempest intermediate.
There you go.
Alright, so again, I'll be going over this for Ms. Begay Lewis. So we are implementing our house system, some celebrations and upcoming events. The big, big motivator that Ms. Begay has shared with the staff, the students, and community is that we have moved from a D school to a C school. So, I mean, I believe that deserves some recognition, a lot of hard work from our staff and especially our students. So that's a big, huge motivator of displaying progress. We have 109 students that had perfect attendance for the month of October. And I'm sorry, I got you guys helped me. Just trick. I'm so sorry. Invite us to celebrate their student accomplishments. Good job to the students who received. Two major upcoming events is on the 22nd of November. We are having a Dona Atum Tash event from 8 to 12. So if you guys are available, please join us. And newsletters will be coming out with upcoming events for November. School highlights. We did have a big event during Halloween. We did have a Halloween costume parade, and it was awesome, amazing. I'm pretty sure you guys get to see some of the pictures and highlights in the video. And they were, it was an awesome, awesome event. Thank you to the district staff who came to support the students and cheering them on and handing out candy. Ms. Morales, a big thank you for inviting a group of teachers from Germany that came to our campus, spent the day, talked, presented, and interacted with our students and staff. We had a few student ambassadors who did a wonderful job answering questions and assisting our visitors. And then teachers are learning new models of instruction, teaching strategies while summarizing maps and agreeing and disagreeing statement cards. Big thank you to our teachers who recognize our students for all their accomplishments, which will be seen below. This month, our counselor and behavior specialist focused on PBIS with gratitude. They had many activities throughout the week for students to practice gratitude and give examples during our morning announcements. School priorities. Priority number one, Indian Oasis Intermediate School will increase math proficiency by 25% or higher by utilizing assessments and benchmarks to effectively increase instructional practices quarterly. Priority two, the intermediate campus will increase ELA also with 25% or higher. And priority three, intermediate campus will increase their coaching with teachers to support effective instruction by 50% or higher using walkthrough data. And also, I just wanted to add that Ms. Begay did turn in the intermediate board report, and she would just like to add that before the video is shown that we include this example of the tier instruction and curriculum that we use at the intermediate campus. And right now, we have our quarterly benchmarks, which we do, which we display growth, and we are tracking our data consistently with our district format of assessments. Teachers at the intermediate campus are taking DFAs weekly, which are aligned to the state standards and which, you know, we do implement strategies for reinforcement or interventions to reinforce the standards. The behavioral report, violation, drugs, number of events, there's two. Our stretch goals, district-wide in attendance in fourth grade. The highlights with 90% or higher attendance, fourth grade, an average about a little above 90. Fifth grade, also in the high 90s. Thank you to Mr. Hiloa. Sixth grade, Ms. Woosley has 95%. So we are up there with our attendance. Some October highlights. So there's a list of our events that we are looking forward to. The next upcoming one is the Indigenous Day, which is set for the 22nd from 8 to 12. Student of the Month Breakfast, Spring Pictures. Student of the Month Breakfast, Spring Pictures, uh, our Spring Parent Teacher Conference, our Amazing Shake, again, um, the Student of the Month Breakfast, which is amazing. And, oh, our sixth grade versus staff, I believe that's the basketball game. And then sixth grade promotion in May.
I'm gonna run the video. Yes, sir. Yeah. Thank you. Questions or comments from the board for the report? Ms. Ella?
I picked up one at the newsletter, um, today at the intermediate school. I really liked that newsletter and I appreciate that, telling us all about what's happening and, and upcoming events. And also picked up, um, Rubens. Yeah. So that was good. Thank you for that.
Thank you. I'll let Ms. Begay know.
Ms. Anna?
I wanna congratulate you guys and your hard work, um, from moving from a D school to a C school. That says a whole lot. It's exciting to see, can definitely see the passion that you guys have working with students and also the excitement that students have with learning. Just by looking at your attendance rate, it's amazing because every single one of your, it's over 90%, which is great. One of the things that I liked was the, um, the gratitude training that you had. I think that's amazing. I think it's, um, helpful for students to learn how to express their emotions and especially when they are dealing with trying times or just making sure that they're being grateful to other people. So, thank you. I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. I wanna say I appreciate you for coming in tonight and being here. I'm sure it wasn't your first choice to be like, "Oh, yeah." But I wanna say thank you so much. And again, um, I appreciate how much you do for the school, for the students. If anything, I will, I will say, on behalf of the community, your name kinda seems synonymous with like the, the campus for whatever, not for whatever reasons, because I know you're a great teacher. But thank you for being, uh, a great representative and a great teacher and for doing what you do. I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Ms. Diaz.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's give it up for Ms. Constance Anse, please, and representing the high school and middle school.
Hello, board members, President Buendia, Superintendent Diaz, and everyone who's still here. So our school highlights, um, we had our first quarter awards assembly on October 11th. My favorite number two, 10th grade reached 90% attendance, so... And then our community day was a su- excuse me, a success. Thanks to all the campuses for all your efforts and our donations we did receive from the communities. We had two districts provide hot dogs and buns and we got water from two different locations, so it was a great success. Thank you. She gets to take a look at the, um, board report. No, you're in the right place. That's fine.
She's ready for the video. She's ready for the video.
What's that? Comfort?
X represents how many dollars is in your piggy bank since you don't know. Plus $10 because it says there that there's also, your piggy bank also contains $10. And X because you don't know yet how many $10 is in that piggy bank.
Andre is a piggy bank. And he said $70. That's his Y. We don't know how many $5 and $10 inside of it. He didn't say specifically how many weeks he's done it or how many times he's mowed the neighbor's yard. So, I put it as X.
So what are you guys working on? Get ready for...
Cleaning these up.
So that you, so they're ready to what? To weave?
One thing I do wanna let you know about the video, you saw the like slides with the covers, if you will. That is made by our CTE digital, um, digital communications class. They are getting their, um, work experience by creating that and getting feedback from me, so...
Sweet. Questions or comments for the report from Secretary?
Just, just one comment. I was there for the community day. And, um, everybody was, um, doing a nice thing for the students. And then the one I liked was, um, until you wait. Everybody was involved in that one. And, um, my grandson was one of them there too. And that's good so the kids will know what, uh, electricity is all about, you know, so... That was good. Even the little ones were doing it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We were grateful for them because we know that they had their event that day, but they still came out for us, so we did. We're grateful.
Anything, Ms. Anna?
I just wanna say thank you, um, looking at the attendance. Even though you didn't, really not every class made the benchmark of 90%, I think it's still an overall good rate of attendance. I do appreciate all your efforts, so thank you.
Just wanted to say, I wanted to shout you out for doing the, the little bomb recognition you do for your teachers. I think it's pretty cool, so...
Thank you.
Kudos. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, let's give it up for Mr. Fox.
Good evening, once again, President Buendia, board members, Superintendent Diaz, Ms. Anse. Are you leasing out that video production department at all? Extra credit? Alright, um, so we had a good month. We're right there. It should've been the first bullet, but we saved the best for the last. Or at least I feel we saved the best for the last. We were, when we first saw our grade, we were like points away from an F. We were that, we were very close. We're now a solid C. So we are absolutely over the moon at the, at the alternate, uh, accelerated campus. Our teachers work very hard. I would say tirelessly because they do answer texts eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night. Our students, we look at their edgenuity logs, they're knocking workout at 2 o'clock in the morning. We're just pleased as can be. Their production as compared to last year, month to month, is up. We have, we're gonna be up to eight because we're gonna get another four done. Mark Blaine, my student of the month, hasn't made the list yet. He's still finishing. We're gonna have eight graduates just in December. And we already have four. So we're very proud about that. Kit Peak was awesome. You'll see a couple, just a couple pictures in the video. They're gonna come back out. And we're gonna use the, do it on the field this time because we found that our lighting, although it's, it's the yellow low, uh, light, lighting that, that, that Tucson and we use to keep Kit Peak viable, still messed it up. So we only saw, they said about maybe 75, 80% of what we could've. And we saw really, really cool stuff. So we're gonna do it, again, we're gonna do it every semester. Kit Peak loves to come down. So we're just very, very happy, um, about how this month went and the experiences some of our students had. Erin, we are ready for that video, please. So I just wanna add that we would've had more pictures on picture day of some of our other graduates because it was so neat to see them being prepped and preened by everyone that had the opportunity. But they said, "Nope, we don't wanna be seen on video." That brave man was willing to do so. Any questions, concerns? Yes, ma'am.
Anything, Ms. Ella? No? Ms. Anna?
Just congratulations.
Thank you.
On moving from D to C. Also, um, I think it's amazing to have Kit Peak at your campus. Also, um, I love the graduation photos. I wish more of them took photos of that. You can tell that your staff truly cares.
They, they do. Thank you. I'm glad it shows through. And this is just a brief synopsis of the numbers as opposed to last year. So you can see that they're, um, I'm not gonna say the A word. Enrollment's a little lower than last year, which is very good for us because the numbers are up. So that means, on average, the students are being more productive on a daily basis.
President Buendia?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fox, um, are you able to share a little bit about what you've been working on related to attendance?
Absolutely. Related towards attendance.
Okay.
If you, Erin, if you find our attendance, it'll be a little easier for me to unfortunately explain. Okay, so, with only two, three and two in the middle school, you can see what one tough seventh grader who has a lot of issues, has a lot of excused absences, does. To our numbers, the same goes with eighth grade. Sixth grade is two, but we're very fortunate. Our two sixth graders are both mentally, physically, healthy. they come to school very often. What we're working on is we have some pretty heavy contracts out there to try to persuade our students to up their attendance, but that contract comes after a lot of the TLC, a lot of the affirmation, a lot of the positive, the warm welcoming environment, the stumble, fall down, get back up, let's do it again. But we are working on, we have some contracts coming through. As soon as the Desert Diamond comes through with that donations that we earned, we're gonna put together a PBIS store for all kinds of incentives, not just attendance, but you have to be in school in order to win those things. Student of the Month, you're not a student of the month, you could do 10,000 activities, and if you do them all at home, you're still not student of the month. You have to have 90% or more attendance, so when you saw Mark here with all those students last month, they are all, it's attendance driven. We are giving very frank and honest assessments to our oldest of students, breaking down timeframes and explaining 61 and a half hours and how they're not gonna finish by 22, so we don't want them to just waste their time, so we have, we have, there's many, many good online schools out there. So we're trying to refer some of our hardest cases or the ones that it's just not feasible so that they still have now, they still have a positive place to go, and they always know they can come back to us. I had one of my TOCC Jessica Poehler students come back just today, this time was to brag, and it was awesome to see her. We're looking at a modified schedule of six periods instead of seven, so that each class is an hour apiece, because that will be easier for us to account for our attendance numbers, because they have to be, for a full day, it's four hours. So some of my guys work late at night, they don't get to school until 10:30 because, you know, life doesn't permit, and they're not getting four quality hours of instruction in. So we're working on that as well, which puts a little bit of a burden on the teachers because they're gonna start their day at eight instead of 8:30. But most of it is just through positive reinforcement, a can-do attitude, and just knowing that when they come to us and they're already struggling with attendance, they get the contract right off the bat, because we want to just impress upon the parents how important it is for them to come to school. Anything else that I'm forgetting that we've discussed?
Do you be coming back with a multi-tier system of support with attendance?
Uh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That's it?
Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
No, not a concern, I think more so just a comment. I feel like, again, we've, I've said, as far as from the boards, as a board member standpoint, understanding that the accelerated campus is very unique, and so it's, I'm not saying let Mr. Fox off the hook on some of the things that the expectations are, but expressly, I hope that if there is any opportunity for the board and any way to support whatever it is that we can do, and I'm sure, I know that we genuinely try to do that for each campus, but I feel like, I know we've had some conversation about, you know, what, because I do understand that the accelerated campus doesn't fit the mold, but it is, it is something that I do know we as a board have supported forever. Boards before us have supported. So I just want to say, I understand what you're up against. It's not falling upon us to be like, well, you're not doing what you're supposed to. It is, though, expressly important that I'm appreciative that you're including some more in-depth events that include families or, you know, just to get them on the same page with you on what we need to do together, not the school is responsible for getting your kid to school, that's kind of not. I think we need to get the community more involved, and I know that we're pushing on that effort for them to be able to do that, so I really appreciate that you're, you're kind of branching out and doing more. But again, I just want to continue to express that I'm really thankful for you and your staff and everything that you guys do that already is above and beyond, so I just wanted to express that and comment that.
Appreciate that.
I appreciate that, and I look forward to seeing how you, what you think may or may not work and whatnot, and of course, working with the superintendent to see those things.
Absolutely.
Much appreciated, thanks, sir.
I appreciate you guys, thank you very much.
Oh, and I look forward to being at the graduations, I'll be here, I'm not going to the conference, so I'll be here.
Yeah, and when we, that's great, we appreciate that, when we planned this, we didn't know we were gonna have up to eight. So one side of me is super excited because it's gonna be standing room only because it's gonna happen right here. So I'm pretty, I'm pretty excited, we weren't gonna have a December, because it's a lot to put together, and there is that expense that sometimes we don't have. But once Mark, we knew was finishing, we knew we were doing it, because we're not gonna make that man wait. He's worked his butt off for two and a half years to get to where he is, so it just so happened that he set fire to a whole bunch of other kids, and we're up to eight, and we're just, again, so excited.
And it's the 19th, right, December 19?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we're getting, we're waiting for the invites to come in and then we'll push them out. So you'll get them within a week.
Sounds great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're good. Number five this evening is our barbecueery, school district governing board member reports. Anything, Ms. Hannah?
I do not have anything, I do want to apologize, I have not been around lately. I was thinking about the last time I've been here was probably September, maybe July. Just starting this job has been kind of busy, but then also having a lot of family issues as far as like deaths in my family, but I am looking forward to attending and come more things. I just see, keeping this calendar open, I'm trying to write down stuff that I can go to when I have free time.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah, anything, Ms. Hella? Board report?
Just that I already said, I attended the community days and, I mean, the games. And I just, at this time, I just wanted to congratulate all our principals, all our teachers for them making that great. And it's really exciting, you know, I was excited to hear that about it, you know, so keep it up for the next grade. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and again, I just, I want to express on my behalf, as far as board reports go, I have been a lot more busy with work as well, so I think it's important for us to keep informed, and I'm grateful that the superintendent does keep us really informed on a lot of what's going on. And of course, we do try to keep our ear to the ground when it comes to anything going on in the community and share that with the superintendent, but I just want to continue as well to express how thankful I am as a member of the community, as a parent, and as a board member, to see what you all do and how you all make it happen and make it work, it's really truly, it's a blessing, I think it needs to be expressed that, because without what you all do, our students and our communities would be far way worse off, and just thankful for each and every one of you. And so I want to express as well that I'll try to make sure that I'm available and committing and re, reviewing my schedule to see when I can and cannot be available for, but I also work an hour away from sales, so it's a little hard to do that, and I work an hour that way as opposed to that way. So anyway, nonetheless, I'm grateful and thank you, and I'll try to put together a much more detailed report as we move forward. With that, we'll move on to number seven, which is our barbecue unified high school district superintendent's report. Mr. Diaz?
President Buendia, members of the board, members of my staff and the community. For the month of October, I want to give a full shout-outs before I get into my report. For the Department of Operations, I am looking forward to the completion of the secondary roof project, which is 90%, and it's expected to be completed by December 15th. And also a shout-out on all of the work orders that have completed. So far, out of the 123 work orders submitted in the new platform, 82 have been completed, so thank you to our Director of Operations. Also, 38 members of the community, 38 air conditioners have been installed at the primary, 60 at intermediate, 76 at secondary, 43 in teacher housing, for a total of 270, 17 units. So it's a great investment that we are excited that in the next 20 years, our students will benefit and staff from the new air conditioning. Also, we're looking forward to the beginning of that weatherization project at intermediate and getting the other schools approved through the SFP. From the Department of Curriculum and Instruction, I want to express my appreciation to our district coaches for putting all of that data together, including the classroom visits, the lesson planning, and the proficiency, and also supporting and being available for co-planning professional development for some of our schools. Also, from the desk of the superintendent, I want to thank our school, our district psychologist, Dr. Honor Altom special ed services, and also the principals who have recommended the students and families that we have met during the month of October related to chronic absentism. We have another one coming up in December. And I want to thank and a shout-out to the primary administration, Ms. Enriquez, for her support in facilitating the meeting with students and herself with SFE to provide what are some of the strengths, some of the areas of food that kids don't like and some recommendations. I want to thank all of the 301 committee leads that have supported the last two months to be able to provide the plans and begin working. I want to thank all of the principals for the collaboration for the first quarter data analysis. And I want to thank Chukuk district and Heyekuan for hosting us during the month of October and providing them with updates for barbecue unified school district. I also want to express my appreciation to HRDC that they also met with me during the month of October related to all of the BOZ updates and with an emphasis on the audit. I want to thank also the Department of Transportation for the wheelchair bus that we now have as part of our fleet, and also their commitment and support for the Halloween community event. The social emotional learning department, thank you for your support and also bring it up to the community that they are coaches for parents available. Right now, one of the theme is bullying and how to support the children. They have support that can be done by weekly over the phone, and it's ongoing support, and they have free tools. So let's take advantage of that. From the desk of our exceptional education director, I also want to express and a shout-out to Dr. Marcus for meeting with the Sonoran Desert at the UVA to discuss the transition services for students. And having said, let's look at and see some of our involvement through the superintendent video that was also created by May Stanja Sudan, thank you for her support.
Right now, we're just learning about the calculation of the acceleration with gravity.
How do you do that?
Well, we have formulas for it, but they're all on the computer, but these are all like calculations. I don't have to answer yet on how fast it's accelerating.
So care of eight, that one that dropped from the beaches? I know, we're trying to do the formulas for, we'll also be, impulse, our momentum is impulse, and then, forgot what the last one was, but we're just solving these equations, these are formulas.
Questions, comments, concerns, complaints, all welcome.
Comments from the board for the superintendent's report, Ms. Hella?
Just one question, all these projects that currently being worked on, what other projects is in the future? Any other projects?
Thank you, Ms. Hella, I'll be more than happy to share, we do have one of the reports that we provided a list of all of the projects, we have about 17 projects total. Some of the projects include not only finishing the air conditioning, but also finishing the roofs, the weatherization. We're gonna move with the weatherization of the intermediate, we're waiting for the approval for the other schools. We're also gonna be, one of the projects is a canopy in intermediate, and I can share the list of all the additional projects for your information.
Mr. Diaz? Oh, sorry, Ms. Hannah?
I was just gonna ask about your experience at NAE. I know I asked one, we kind of briefly went over it.
It is, it is an experience, based on all of the workshops, what I appreciated is the amount of workshops that they have available, targeting our student population, targeting the strategies for our student population. There was one in particular that I'm looking forward, the one that is aligned with the goals, the one that is aligned with the models of instruction, which is the engagement continuum that is one of the ones that we start in the conversation with the principals. It provides a spectrum of what are the targeted behaviors by leaving the ownership on the students to self-reflect on the behavior and how to improve on the next levels of behavior. Another one, I know we had the opportunity to visit Anahuacamecano in Los Angeles. Well, the person that created the Seven Learning, the author was there presenting, so we had the opportunity to attend the conference as well, and to be more in-depth in some of the areas that they're targeting. There were many districts represented, many districts serving students, and Native American students represented, all the way from Alaska, Hawaii, the northeast, northern, the northwest, but also the southwest, and it was beautiful to see the representation from all of the different communities. We also had the opportunity to visit the Welcome Center from the Awa Caliente tribe and the work that they have done to be able to advocate for them as well as to teach the community. So I highly recommend there's an opportunity for, to continue participating in that conference, to put it on the agenda, but also to visit and learn from what the Awa Caliente in Palm Springs tribe has accomplished. It's inspiring. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Diaz, have we gotten any kind of, if we haven't, may I request information on vacancies and then also the effort that we're making to try and recruit, retain, and get some support for our campuses as far as teachers or whatever it is, whatever it may have been needed, because I haven't really asked, but I wanted to also expressly talk about some of the, well, more or less vacancies and absences when it comes to staff, and then how campuses are either shifting around or having to do what they need to do to make sure that classes are covered. But expressly, I wanted to ask what our vacancies are and then what efforts we're making since we're halfway through the school year, for next school year, and if there's any need to make sure we're addressing now as opposed to later. That was all, that was all, you don't have to answer, you can let us know, but you can answer, but I think it'd be good, and especially for our retreat that we're gonna plan, to have some discussion and maybe look at some, how we're gonna address it.
I highly encourage, I try to keep all of the vacancies as part of the weekly highlight reports. There's a section of vacancies, so I'll continue or keep that one. I will continue to update it as we go through, so you can see all of the different vacancies that we have, but I'll be more than happy to bring it up during the next board meeting as part of my superintendent report. But it's that one, I try to keep it as updated as possible on the weekly superintendent board report. as possible on the weekly superintendent board report for the governing board. But I'll be more than happy to bring it back as well for the community transparency and information. In terms of the, also, how, the second request, it was how are we managing the absences at every school based on the teacher absences?
Oh.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
What page do you put that on, if you don't mind me asking? On your report? Because there's a lot. What was it, the beginning?
Let me go back and check my report.
I was going to say, because I'm the one who looks at this a lot.
You do, I've seen it. I do have that information available, because I get it as part of my...
Thank you. And again, if it was there, I wouldn't have asked, I'm sorry.
No, I will add it if I wasn't interested in it.
All right, if that's it for the superintendent's report, number eight is our Barbecue High School Athletics Travel. Again, board members, this is just for information, travel for BHS Athletics, for the cross-country, it looks like, and the basketball. So, just information items. Number nine, first reading of the Barbecue Unified School District Policy Amendment. Does anyone have any comments on this first reading that we want to make sure to address? Yes. Ms. Anna?
I did bring up some concerns when I was speaking to the superintendent about the requirements for staff to pay incidental charges. I know sometimes that is not feasible, and also it puts staff in situations where they don't have the funding to do something like that. So I would try to see if we have something that we could do to assist with that, because I don't think it's fair when that situation happens. I did share with some, with him, one of my friends who had, went on travel and got to his place, and they charged his, his incidentals, and he had no money for the entire time he was there. So he was struggling.
We will look and I will seek some guidance also from our CFO. From what I understand is when some of us, some of the staff members, when they have a credit card or ATM, sometimes resorts or hotels, they put a hold on an X amount of money as part of the incidentals, locking their only funding that they have available, putting them in the predicament, correct? Okay.
I like, I mean, I understand that a hundred thousand percent. I think it sets a little bit of a discriminatory-ish, if that's what the word we want to say, on who gets to go and who doesn't, because some people don't have that type of means. And if this is important for us to be able to be equal and fair on across the board, then it kind of feels a little bit discriminatory to say, don't ask to go anywhere if you can't pay or put down for your incidental charges. And I agree, again, if they are going to charge or do have, and we do provide some form of a case-by-case scenario where, okay, give some authority to the superintendent to approve such and such. I think that that might be something to look at. I understand that we want to make sure that we're maintaining a level of financial responsibility, but also, just as Ms. Stevens said, it doesn't, it isn't always feasible for anyone to have either a credit card, especially if you're from the nation and you're going to be participating. Many tribal members don't have credit cards. They might have a debit card, and there goes probably a hold on majority of what they had to use for travel or whatever they were going to do. Some of us are, well, better off and can do that and okay, but I think that we need to be very expressly understanding of some of the situations that we're dealing with when it comes to tribal school, tribal, schools on tribal lands. And I don't want to say that we're also picking and choosing who can and can't go, which sounds like from reading it. And I get it, like, if we do, if we do need to make sure that if there are incidental charges, when we, when we, if we do approve such use, that they're responsible for that. But I don't think we should be saying, don't ask to go if you can't do this, which is what that says to me.
Let me do some homework and bring it back.
Thank you. Anything, Ms. Ella? Okay. Letter F is our vote to convene session per ARS three, I'm sorry, ARS thirty-eight dash four, thirty-one point zero three, A one three. Without objection, I motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anna Marie Stevens. Mostapo.
Mostapo.
Okay. We will convene our executive session and return once we have completed. Thank you.
Mrs. Zavala, you let us know who would you need in the executive meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we'll call our meeting back to order, moving to letter G, which is our vote to reconvene into regular board meeting. A motion to approve is there second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Annemarie Stevens.
All of the favor this motion, Juan Bondea.
Monsapo.
I would make reasonable.
Monsapo.
We are now back in regular board meeting, moving on to letter H is our action items. Number one is discussion and possible approval of student expulsion. Mr. Diaz, anything you want to leave with, or do you want us to just?
No, go ahead, President Mondia. We do have, for the public, we do have a request for a student to be considered for enrollment. And after we've been the documentation presented, I'd be more than happy to follow up on your recommendation.
Okay, with that said, I would like to move.
I believe the motion will be, we will, the board agreed to honor the expulsion and provided direction to the superintendent to formulate a letter to the student family and guardian, will be both on guidelines for readmission.
I'll kind of paraphrase, but fill in if anything. My motion will be to.
Honor the expulsion.
Honor the expulsion. Further directive to the superintendent to afford some direction, guidance for readmission to be addressed at a later date.
In a timeline.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Annemarie Stevens.
All of the favor this motion, Juan Bondea.
Monsapo.
I would make reasonable. Annemarie Stevens?
Monsapo.
Motion carries, number two is our discussion and possible approval of the reclassification. Oh my gosh, what did I say earlier? Approval of reclassification or hire of middle, high school principal. I want to start with this, particularly Mr. Diaz, and then I'll hand it over to you. Just for the public's information, governing board did have, and it was an executive session to discuss the position, particularly to make sure that we were on the same page, or at least on par with what information the board requested, or questions that may have been asked regarding the position of the principal at Barra Civi Middle High School. Furthermore, the board had previously agreed to an interim position for Ms. Constance Onse, which again has served as the interim principal for Barra Civi Middle and High School, which would be complete after December. It was at the request of this board that we addressed this memo prior to anything else moving forward, but I understand that there has been some movement on the side of the administration to prepare for the following recommendations, which I'll go ahead and allow Mr. Diaz to state.
And if you don't mind, Aaron posting the memo.
Do you want me to pull it up?
Yes, please. And to the recommendation.
It's this one, right?
Second page. President Mondia, members of the board, I have provided with with two recommendations for the governing board to consider. Option one is for the office of the superintendent is asking the barbecue unified school district to approve Ms. Constance Onse for the permanent barbecue middle high school principal effective January first, twenty twenty four. Or option two, to proceed with the interview process and bring the interview panel recommendations during the December twenty twenty four regular board meeting for the permanent BM eight barbecue middle high school principal.
Did you say the recommendations?
Hmm?
Oh, he did. He was speaking so fast. I like to motion for option one, which is to approve Ms. Constance Onse for the permanent barbecue middle high school principal effective January first, twenty twenty four. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anna Marie Stevens.
All of the favor the motion, Juan Bondea.
Mosapo.
Anna Marie Stevens.
Mosapo.
Motion carries, congratulations, Ms. Onse. You have been such a great addition to the administrative team, and we look forward to seeing you be successful, and of course, you know, thank you for everything. Moving on, number three this evening is our second reading of the Arizona School Boards Association Policy Advisory. Governing Board, again, this is just advisories that are, that we have submitted from ASBA, right? That need to be updated? Yes, so this is just, as laws change, ASBA recommends these policy updates and make sure that we receive them, so if there are no questions, I'd like to motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anna Marie Stevens.
All of the favor the motion, Juan Bondea.
Mosapo.
Elamay Grieswood. Anna Marie Stevens.
Mosapo.
Thank you. Number four this evening, second reading of the barbecue unified school district policy revision, AC. Board members, if you'll indulge, I'd like to expressly read this revision. I know that as a school district, I'm hopeful you all have been able to escort, sorry, as a school board, I hope you all were able to review and take a look at, and generally, if there were any questions, of course, they would have been brought forward, but I want to firstly, read the revised BUSD policy AC for non-discrimination, equal opportunity, and then it would be my honor, I think, to pass either motion and or vote for this revision. So, resolution of the barbecue, I'm sorry, revolution of the governing board of barbecue unified school district number forty of Pima County, Arizona, revising BUSD policy AC, non-discrimination, equal opportunity. Whereas barbecue unified school district and its teachers, staff, and administrators govern their actions by embracing core values that emphasize student-focused expectations. Responsive learning climate, communication, transformative innovation, meaningful engagement, and genuine celebration. And whereas barbecue unified school district and its teachers, staff, and administrators strive to pursue a vision where students and others are loved, encouraged, and prepared to take on the world by embracing the Thana Altham Himdak, or way of life. And whereas consistent with the Himdak, barbecue unified school district celebrates all individuals in all ways and walks of life. Now therefore, the governing board of barbecue unified school district number forty of Pima County, Arizona, hereby adopts the following resolution. It is, it is resolved that governing board policy AC is revised to read. The board, consistent with applicable law and the Thana Altham Himdak, is committed to a policy of non-discrimination in relation to disability, race, color, religion, religious beliefs, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, age, or national origin. This policy will prevail in all matters concerning staff members, students, the public, educational programs, and services and individuals with whom the board does business. Whereas barbecue unified school district, along with its teachers, staff, and administrators, guides every action with a deep commitment to core values that nurture student-focused care, a warm and welcoming learning environment, open communication, transformative innovation, heartfelt engagement, and joyful celebration. And whereas barbecue unified school district, through the dedication of its teachers, staff, and administrators, is inspired by a vision where every student and member of the community is cherished, supported, and encouraged to grow and thrive rooted in the Thana Altham Himdak, or our way of life. And whereas, in keeping with our Himdak, barbecue unified school district honors and celebrates the beauty and diversity of every individual and every path in life. And whereas the barbecue board of barbecue unified school district, sorry, whereas the governing board of barbecue unified school district number forty of Pima County, Arizona, vehemently supports and reaffirms this resolution. Now therefore, be it resolved that BUSD governing board policy AC is hereby revised to read. The board with respect and love, in accordance with applicable law and the Thana Altham Himdak, is wholeheartedly committed to a policy of inclusion and non-discrimination. This policy embraces all individuals regardless of disability, race, color, religion, religious beliefs, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, age, or national origin. This commitment will guide all decisions and actions regarding staff members, students, the public, educational programs and services, and all who interact with the board or its agents. Thana Altham Nation, for time immemorial, has welcomed, established, and conducted itself in grace, acceptance, and care for one another. Our schools as guests on Thana Altham land and our board elected from communities of the nation have deep-seated root in the overall acknowledgement that our schools must adhere to in order to provide exceptional service to the students, staff, and all who conduct business with the school district. This resolution further enhances the acknowledgement that that has stood since its inception, and we felt required emphasis that our schools welcome and support all LGBTQIA2S+ members of the nation or general public, and any who feel, who have felt ostracized or unsafe for any reason within the boundaries of the school's jurisdiction, campuses, and classrooms. This resolution again further reminds the community, students, teachers, and organizations that attend or do business with our schools, that any actions to discriminate against any member of the community, student, or teacher in our schools is vehemently condemned and will fall within the appropriate chain of command and proper processes or procedures to be dealt with. Adopted at a governing, at a meeting of the governing board on twenty twenty four.
November.
November, well, if approved today, November twelfth, twenty twenty four. Are there any questions? If not, I would love to motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Ms. Anna Marie Stevens. Mosapo. Motion carries, thank you. Number five is discussion and possible approval of the barbecue unified school district teacher pay-for-performance three oh one plan. Are there any questions from the board, or is there a motion to approve? I'll move to approve the three oh one pay-for-performance plan for intermediate campus.
Second.
Second by Ms. Anna Marie Stevens.
All of the favor the motion, Juan Bondea.
Mosapo. New number six this evening is discussion and possible approval of the modular solutions contract, contract, we know. Mr. Diaz?
President Mondia, members of the board and members of the community, the reason we are bringing back this contract, barbecue unified school district follow the procedures in how to secure a vendor to update five of our modular, based on the work that they have completed. Some of the work that still needed to get done to complete the project has extended the work over to this school year. So we are bringing back the, this memo for the governing board to consider extending the contract for this school year so that they can now get paid, since they have completed anything that was outstanding on the project.
Are there any questions from the board, or is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Anna Marie Stevens. Second by Ms. Elamay Grieswood. Mosapo. Motion carries, moving on. Next item is the discussion and possible approval or ratification of the June twenty fifth, twenty twenty two special board meeting in accordance with ARS thirty-eight dash four three one point oh five B per the attorney, Arizona Attorney General's Office. Mr. Sabal, thank you.
Be revised by the Honor General in our report that they had found the finding that we need to correct, and the only way to correct it is by the board going back and to amend the June twenty fifth, twenty twenty two items the board approved. Apparently, when we did them over at the S.A.R.S. under the former superintendent, we were violating. So they said the only way to, well, and clear that violation is for the board to come back and re-improve these at a regular board. And on the agenda, as you can see, was, was the pay for performance for the prior superintendent.
Okay.
Extra days for Ms. Kinsey, and I believe the last one was a rehire for superintendents.
Okay. With that, if there are no questions, I'll motion to approve. Second by Ms. Elamay Grieswood.
All of the favor the motion, Juan Bondea.
Mosapo. Okay. Motion carries, next item is the discussion and possible approval of the recommendation to the barbecue unified school district legal counsel to make an effort to recuperate funds on overpayment claims. I'll motion to approve that item as stated. Is there a second?
Second.
Miss, second by Ms. Anna Marie Stevens. Mosapo. Next item on our agenda is the discussion and possible approval of the selection for delegate and alternate to attend the ASBA annual membership meeting and registration. I'm not going. Are you going?
No.
It's a virtual meeting.
Oh.
Oh.
Okay.
What's the date?
It's actually the nineteenth, uh, September nineteenth, that same.
That is the same day as the accelerated graduation of the eight students.
Is it the same time as the
I was gonna say.
Annual conference?
The way we have it, it is at, my understanding, five o'clock on the calendar?
No, 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 I think you're talking about this, or that, graduation or the, this meeting?
This meeting.
It doesn't say, huh? I can't remember when they do it.
It can't be there.
If, you said not till five for the graduation? What time's the graduation?
I had it on my calendar, it's December.
Do they have the main, I don't know, let me see.
At four o'clock.
They usually have an agenda, no, Ben?
So if you click the link, I, you know, honestly, I've never seen this format in a voting board.
Yeah, it's weird. I can't even now.
So, it's new, open that, it was number ten. If you click the link.
The membership meeting is from three thirty to five o'clock. That's when. Yeah, it's on, when you click on the events, and you go to the annual meeting, there's, they have like an agenda for the day. December, on Thursday, the nineteenth, that meeting is from three to five, thirty, three to five. Three thirty to five. And graduation starts at four. Yes. Okay. Can you do that?
Me? No, I have a board retreat from the seventeenth to the twentieth. I got a board retreat, a team retreat. Could it be tabled and discussed?
You can register someone to attend the meeting, which it says. Use this section to register a member of the board who is not a district delegate at all. But I don't know if Sylvia will be available.
Or Ben.
Kathy.
Kathy's going to graduation.
Oh, is she?
I believe so, we pulled her out of A S T A, and she said she wanted to attend the event.
Okay. So it's only.
Sylvia or Ella.
Sylvia or Ella. I don't mind doing it virtually, I can.
You just don't want to miss graduation.
I just don't want to miss the graduation. I think if I can do it, and if Sylvia can be available for after four o'clock, wow. It's only like thirty minutes, then, she might as well do the whole thing. Okay. If Sylvia is there, maybe we can just go ahead and have her do it. She knows.
This will be a virtual meeting.
Oh, it is virtual. How weird for them to just make it virtual. Why is graduation at four? Don't people work?
Because we have some time, we can work on that, so if it works at a different time.
Okay.
At what time is the meeting again?
Three thirty to five o'clock.
Three to five?
Yeah.
Let me work with Mr. Fox to see if we can make some adjustments to make sure that we can participate in both events.
Okay. If we can do that, then I don't mind being the, but we had to make a decision, right? Ben?
Well, the closing day is, uh, September sixth.
So we do have to do that now.
We have to vote in a meeting form.
Can we do a special meeting?
No.
You, you, if you want to have more discussion, you can do a special meeting.
Um. It won't be long. If you can get a consensus, yeah, because if they're not available and they're not able to do it, then it would just be like, oh, I'll, I'll do it anyway. Just need an alternate, but.
And in the past, we have started at ten o'clock, graduations for accelerated, so we can start from ten to
One.
One.
I think usually from ten to one.
And it's eight students, so I'm, I'm possibly thinking that maybe from, even from eleven to one.
Okay.
But I work it out with him.
Can a board member be assigned without them being you? Do you want to be my alternate? I'll do it if you just be the alternate, to say you're the alternate. Well, you don't have to be here, it's virtual.
I mean, like, I have a retreat. I can't be there at all.
No, you don't have to be anywhere, you just gotta be, I'll be on the meeting, but we need alternate, you just alternate.
I could, but the reality is I won't, if something happens to me, I cannot be there. My boss scheduled a retreat.
I could be there. I'll be the delegate. I could be there. I'll be the delegate. I'll motion to assign myself as the delegate and Anna Marie Stevens as the alternate. For the December nineteenth um membership meeting. Is there a second? Second by Miss Anna Marie Stevens. Next item is discussion and possible approval of changing regular board meeting dates from December to February. Ben, you sent everybody the info, huh? Okay, well, just for the sake of um those of us here, because we're here and we told everybody we were gonna. Well, I think I'm pretty sure you did, Ruben. Didn't you tell everybody? Somebody did. Um there was a request from board member Hendricks uh because she is attending. Uh a culture and language class through T O C C. Which falls on each of our meeting dates from December from this date till February. Had request whether or not we might consider changing those dates. I want to ask you guys if we saw any dates to consider. If not, what does the board want to do? Because I'm always set on those dates as those are the days that we're meeting. And I don't mess or do with anything with them. So if we change them, I'm gonna have to see where where what anything's at. But I wanted to at least have the discussion for her sake, because she did say she was willing to go with whatever the board was gonna move for decide. Um I think it's. Great. But I also know board meetings are the second Tuesday of every month and we all know this. So that's my.
I have some dates for you to consider. December the seventeenth. January the fourteenth. And February the twenty fifth.
Because. Fourteenth still the day?
Uh February.
The fourteenth is the regular meeting day.
Yeah, it is.
The what?
January the fourth.
January the fourteenth is the regular meeting.
January the f- sorry.
And the seventeenth is the regular day, no? Oh, I know the ten.
No, no. So it will be January the. Twenty first. And February the twenty fifth. Our students usually play um. At Flagstaff. That weekend before.
And then when what December moved, what did you say? What did you say for December?
Is December the seventeenth, January the twenty first or and February the twenty fifth?
Bedtime. So the proposed dates are December seventeenth, January twenty first and February eighteenth?
February twenty fifth.
That's a long time ago between your meetings.
Or we can do the eleventh. No, the eleventh she cannot, right? So it's either the fourth. And the eighteenth again, um it's um the admin, myself and some of you maybe at uh. Prescott. For the for the tournament. Um because we will make it a state.
Oh, that's true.
Is it possible to host or have the Monday before our board meeting? Because we normally have it the second Tuesday of the month. Could we hold it on the Monday?
Not in February. Because it's it's that weekend, the we are gonna be. Miss Miss um, oh, I was saying on the tenth instead of the eleventh.
Yeah.
That may work.
For me, that works better because most of the time when for work, I usually don't travel on Mondays. But the rest of the timeframe, I'm usually traveling like.
You're talking about only February?
Well, all.
All of them?
Oh, all.
So February, we're looking then at February the tenth. And then.
January thirteenth.
January thirteenth. It's not a holiday?
Oh, I think it is.
On the ten?
When is Luther King the twentieth or the thirteenth?
M L K. I think that's the twentieth.
So it will be the thirteenth board meeting and then December.
Nine.
The ninth.
You okay Ella on those days? The Monday before our next regular meeting?
Like you guys can work anything.
I forgot. So next month though, you're okay? Oh, Ella. If that's okay with you, I'm okay. Okay. Okay, then uh. Ah, the ninth.
The ninth.
December ninth. Okay, with that, I'll motion um to set our next regular board meetings as follows. For December twenty twenty four, the ninth. January twenty twenty five, the thirteenth. And February twenty twenty five, the tenth. Is there a second to approve?
Second.
Second by Miss Anna Marie Stevens. Letter I is our consent agenda without objection. A motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Miss Elma Grieswood. Motion carries. Letter J is request for future agenda items.
Retreat.
Okay, what are you thinking?
When is the re- what is the date or what are you looking at?
We can do it here?
Yes.
Fine.
Friday, Saturday or Saturday, Sunday?
You want two days? I prefer two days.
Because it's gonna be also on onboarding um for the new board member, we may need the two days.
Okay. What days are you not available in January? After the meeting, the organizational meeting.
Because we we got a meeting in January the thirteenth, right?
Yes.
So will are you guys open um? The tenth and the eleventh of January?
Can we do a half day Friday and a full day Saturday?
Look, hold on, Ruben.
Or do you want to? I maybe could do a full day Friday?
Half day Friday and full day?
Full day Friday and the Saturday, but if we can do half, that would be awesome, but if not, then that's fine.
Or just Saturday?
No, no, no. Do the two days because I don't want to rush or slam anything together. Tenth and eleventh? Oh, she's checking. You better be here for your swearing in ceremony too.
Oh, that's right. I don't think so. Just as of today, it's not in my calendar, but there are, we have scheduled. Something for the ninth.
The ninth?
Yeah.
Can we can we confirm you for the?
No, so the ninth through the twelfth.
Seventeenth, eighteenth?
That's a holiday and my principal will be uh it's a three day holiday.
Oh, okay.
It's a Martin Luther King Monday, Tuesday. Half day on Friday, the twenty fourth and Monday, the twenty seventh?
I can't do the twenty fourth.
You can't do the twenty fourth?
We have a.
What about the twenty fifth, Saturday, the twenty fifth and Monday, the twenty seven?
Why come you're skipping Sunday? Why are you skipping Sunday?
To give you guys a date to recruit.
Might as well meet, we can meet.
I was saying that Monday because she Miss um Steven mentioned that she came Monday, then I want to capitalize on that day.
You can do Sunday.
I can do Sunday.
You can do Sunday?
Yeah.
Just do a half day Sunday, do a full day, the twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth and half day on the twenty seven?
Can we set that then tentatively and and then go from there? January twenty fifth and twenty sixth.
Any future item?
You could take us somewhere, we're gonna take us where we can.
What were you saying about swearing in? When is that happening?
It's in January. You have we have to do it the first meeting in January, so it'll be on the thirteenth. And you and Jessica Deere swearing in. You're gonna be here, right?
Yes.
You just changed the meetings.
Any future item agenda that you're recommending?
No, but I know we we had a little bit of discussion on the agenda for the retreat, which I think would be good to kind of go over and then make sure the board. So where in case there's anything else they want for that.
And I also noted um. Follow up on the absences and how they've been covered.
Okay.
Um also um vacancies. Um do some homework on credit card options for incidentals. Those are some of the future item agenda that you also requested. And if not, um I know uh President Mundia and I meet once a month, um the last month of the last month of every month. So if you think of any future items agenda, just communicate with President Mundia then or.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
If that is it, then um I'll motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Miss Anna Marie Stevens.